I'm going to call and order the public hearing for January 5th, 2016. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Janice Carter Beard?
Here.
Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here. Item number one in the public hearing, an order to abandon and revoke the dedication of a portion of West Idaho right-of-way and re-subdivide two unnumbered lots in square 148 and 150 of the Kate addition lot into lots 148A and 150A located at 914 West Idaho Avenue and 809 General Patton, requested by Lawrence and Janet Watts and Neely Durham in accordance with a survey by William J. Bowden, Zoned RS 11, recommended approval would be conditioned by Planning Commission Josh Taylor.
That's a strip at the end of West Idaho that really never got developed. It's being used kind of as spare driveways, I should say, at the end for the two residents neighboring it. It's to revoke it and overlay it now with a servitude that's, you know, pre-deal and it's ongoing and it basically removes the city from any maintenance obligations in there. The conditions, I know it says "conditions," the conditions are just a survey. There's a subdivide also attached because when you revoke a right-of-way, half goes to one owner, half of the right-of-way goes to the other owner, and so the subdivide is just giving that property and incorporating it into the neighboring properties.
Any questions or comments in the council? Any public comments? Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Item number two, an order to approve surplus for the following vehicles to be sold on govdeals.com. Art Peters, and there's a list attached.
These are items that we presented last week that are for sale on GovDeals, out to go on GovDeals, and we're just bringing in to the council for their approval. We're at the public hearing segment.
Any comments or questions from the council? From the public?
Can you put a limit on the, for instance, those 54 red ladder trucks? On what the minimum would be taken for the vehicle?
Not... No, no, we have not got to that point yet. We will probably get to it at the juncture. Can we? Yes, we can, but basically we have to try to see if there's some fair market value out there. But I'm remembering of being told that this is a old mile truck.
It's just a unique vehicle. It's in great shape. It's workable.
Okay.
Something you can have at a parade, something we really don't need, and I hate to let it go, so somebody should be very happy. I think Star Equipment, that gentleman was interested, but it's a fine piece of equipment. It's just very old.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Nurse. We'll move right into our right-of-way scheduled session. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Janice Carter Beard?
Here.
Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here.
First item is election of officers. First officer is president. Accept nominations.
I'll make a motion and my way to be president for the year of 2016.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Accept nominations for vice president?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Mr. Blunt again. He's done a good job. I'm comfortable with Mr. Blunt. I'd make a motion to nominate Mr. Blunt.
Set. Roll call, please.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall? Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. I mean Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Right, prayer Bishop Suley, will you lead us in prayer, please?
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this day and for this hour and these that have gathered here, and for these elected officials, we pray your continued blessings upon them, and we pray that they would have strength and the mindset to lead your people in a spirit of unity, harmony, and love. We pray that all things may be done decent and in order, and it's in the name that's above all names that we say, "Amen."
We'll invite all veterans and active military, please run the proper salute. Chief Thomas, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a gentleman here that's going to speak. Bishop Suley is going to speak on a USDA SET grant. You want to, Bishop? Please state your name and address for the record.
Bishop E. Renee Suley, 42798 Scarlet Circle, Hammond, Louisiana. Also joining me is Ms. Toni Jackson.
Toni Jackson. You need, what else?
Address.
Address, it's 13141 Old Batrooms Highway, Hammond, Louisiana.
We're grateful and thankful for the opportunity to come and share with you this grant, which is a federal grant under the United States Department of Agriculture, and we gave handouts to you, and you can see some of the information there. SET stands for Strengthening Economies Together. It is a regional economic development planning grant, and we held a civic forum in October at the Florida Parish's Arena on October 28th, and it was well-attended. And the goal of LACES is to be able to come up, to create a team through this SET program whose mission is to develop and implement various strategies that will enhance and improve the lives of the people in the region. The region is East Feliciano, St. Helena, Washington Parish, and Tangahbahoa, and some of the areas that we were looking at in terms of regional economic development are at the bottom of the second sheet. Economic development, number one, housing, education, transportation, and we will look at other needs as we move forward in the process. The overall end game is to come up with a high-quality plan that has these essential components on it, and I'm speaking from page three, that is, one, evidence-based, practical, aligned with goals, focused on regional economic development of that four parish region, broadly supported, and brought forth by the team. The team is led by St. Helena Parish. They were the lead agency on this, but there are at least a dozen and a half public and private partners who applied with St. Helena, and we had to sign a commitment letter to be part of this process, and we began meeting in August, laying out the work that we needed to do in order to come up with a plan, and we're about, I would say, 40% through the process. The next document you have is, sort of, lays out the foundation of how we're going to work in this regional economic collaborative, and that is to be inclusive and collaborate, cooperate, coordinate, network, and during that whole process, we hope to build a climate of trust and effectiveness and looking for best practices that, again, affect the four parish region that we are tasked with trying to come up with a regional economic development plan for. And then we have some pictures from the civic forum that kind of lets you see that it was very well-attended. This was October 28th, up in the Florida Parishes, and another SET. We did have elected officials there, and one of the things we try to do at all of our meetings is to make sure that we reach out to the elected officials to let them know that this process is going on. You're welcome to join. We will have a meeting in East Feliciano, probably January 12th it is, and then we'll be here in Tangahbahoa on the 29th, and that's going to be at the Small Business Development Center, and so we welcome your participation, and I'm going to let Toni talk about some of the outcomes from the civic meeting we had at the Florida Parish.
And I would also like to say, we actually were a part of the SET program back in 2012 with USDA, and they came here. We had meetings every month, and from that, and it was to see how we would be able to come to where we are now. This time, they're wanting us to apply for grants to be able to do some of the things that, you know, that we're needing for the region. And so the top strengths that we have for the region were higher education and technical colleges, renewable resources, potential for growth, transportation, the Ag Center and natural resources, community and youth development. So those were the strengths for our region, but for the challenges was workforce development, public transportation, internet access, rural area employment, and there's no collective political voice or educational accountability. And so, so these are what the things that we're looking for, to be able to find monies, whether it's federal through foundations or wherever, so that we can tackle some of the things, some of the challenges that we have for our region. So it's not just for Tangahbahoa Parish, this is for the region. So especially in what we have found that, like, northern end of Tangahbahoa Parish, Washington Parish, St. Helena, and East Feliciano, one of their biggest challenges was internet access. The schools, you know, they need the internet access for the children to be able to do some of their work, so there was, when we met back in 2012, that was something in St. Helena, and Washington Parish had applied for a USDA grant that, to be able to try to see what it would take to be able to get the internet, the broadband, and they were actually awarded, and, but Washington Parish got some internet access, but St. Helena, it didn't, didn't work out for them. So we wanted to do, this time, we want to be able to apply for funding so that we can be able to be successful with some of the challenges that we have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council members?
I have one. The internet access, that grant is coming, is that grant coming through the USDA?
That, the particular one that was awarded back in 2012, it was a USDA grant, but they wanted us to be, to not just look at necessarily even just federal grants, but, you know, to look at other, you know, through foundations and other organizations that may have funding so that we can be able to be successful with what we're trying to do.
So was that with, what the president had talked about with, during the rule, making sure that the rural areas had the internet access?
Right.
That company, NTS, apparently got...
They were the ones that were awarded.
Yeah.
It was not successful in St. Helena, and they had a little bit of a success in Washington Parish, but not as much as with the monies that was awarded to them. So, you know, there was, you know, there were some challenges there.
NTS didn't put any broadband in the northern part of the parish. That's only in Hammond.
In Louisiana as a whole, a lot of the internet grant was tied to the stimulus funding that came down with ERA.
Right.
And Louisiana as a whole lost a major infrastructure grant for internet infrastructure. We were awarded several for technical pieces, and the city of Hammond actually benefited from that. Part of our internet outreach that we were able to accomplish in the city of Hammond paid for all of our ability to livestream our council meetings now.
I think what they're referring to is broadband access in rural parts of the parish, which that hasn't been...
That's what I'm saying, but Louisiana lost all that funding as a whole.
Yeah.
For the infrastructure deployment.
So again, we invite you to participate if you so choose. Again, January 29th, we're going to be at the Small Business Development Center, probably 10 o'clock.
It's at 10.
Is that 10 o'clock?
Do we have lunch?
Of course. Of course, we have lunch at all our meetings.
If you have lunch, I'll be there.
I noticed somebody can help.
Yes, I know.
I appreciate y'all's efforts. I think the biggest challenge, I agree with wholeheartedly, is workforce development because I think the parish and the city, to the mayor, are trying to bring business in, but if we can't, if they can't hire people, then they're not coming.
That's right.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did, I wanted to, before we got started, and I apologize, but I wanted to mention, I'm sure everyone knows that former councilman Willie Grant Jackson passed away, but more importantly, he was an educator and a coach. He was a councilman, but he was a teacher first, and I just wanted to acknowledge him and ask for a moment of silence. Also, Dr. Paul Vega passed away, very, another very important person in our community this week, did a lot for North Oaks and Development Hospital, so just wanted to make sure and acknowledge those two gentlemen, and I think Councilman Grant's, Councilman Jackson's service is this Friday, so I'm just going to have a moment of silence for Councilman Jackson. All right, thank you. Item number two, or B, is a 2014-15 audit report from Kushner Legraeze.
Council President, members of the council, mayor, and city administration, my name's Ernie Jelby. I'm the managing partner with Kushner Legraeze, and I'm here tonight to inform you that we have completed the audit for the city of Hammond for the year-end of June 30th, 2015. It has been submitted to the Legislative Auditor and also to the Federal Clearing House as required, and if I may just take a minute, I'd like to point out a few things. One, we issued a unmodified opinion, which means, in our opinion, the financial statements as presented are fairly presented in all material respects, and it's the best opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. The other item I wanted to point out is that if you look at the government-wide statements, which includes all the funds of the city on a full accrual basis, and you compare the net position this year to last year, you'll see that there's a $23 million decrease, which on the surface would be pretty alarming, but when you look at the reason for that, it's because of a new pronouncement that was issued by the Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB, issued Statement Number 68, which requires you to record your net pension liability. The net pension liability for the city at June 30th, 2015, was $23 million, so it just about equaled the decrease you had in your net position. So if not for that implementation of that GASB, your net position would have stayed about the same, which is good. So I just wanted to make sure you realize that when you compare this year to last year. If you look at just the general funds, fund balance, the general fund, fund balance had an increase of approximately $450,000, putting the general fund, fund balance at about $1.2 million, which is good, and I would recommend that you continue to budget your general fund for a surplus so that you can continue to increase the fund balance in the general fund. We also issued a report on Circular A133, which deals with compliance with your federal grants. We had no compliance findings there, and we issued a report on internal control and compliance in accordance with governmental auditing standards. We had one internal control finding, which is the same finding we had last year, and we had no compliance findings. So overall, for 2015, you received a unmodified opinion on the financial statements. You increased your fund balance in the general fund, and even though you had a net position decrease, it was strictly due to the implementation of that GASB 68, which required the pension liability to be recorded this year. So I would like to thank the mayor, the Director of Finance, Accounting Department, for the assistance they provided to us in cooperation when we performed our audit procedures, and I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to provide the audit services, and at this time, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Ernie, can you explain the finding that was found both last year and this year?
Yes. The finding is that your system, as it currently is in place, is not able to produce the financial statements, so we assist with that. The response was that software has been purchased and that the accounting department is working towards being able to prepare the financial statements in-house. So it's not unusual for governments to get assistance from the auditor in preparing the financial statements, but if that is the case, we do have to make that a finding. So it's my understanding, though, that we've taken steps so that the financial statements can be produced in-house.
Ernie, didn't you also tell us in the meeting that in recording the pension liability, a lot of other municipalities and parish governments went way in the hole?
Yeah, yeah.
And we were fortunate not to do so.
Your net position is still positive, which is very good. When you have to record a $23 million liability, there's a lot of governments that can't do. Not that everybody has the same number, but a lot of governments, when they were forced to record this liability, were not able to do that and still have a positive net position. So you're in good shape there, that you can do that. But it is, it's a liability that you're not going to pay in the next year, you're going to pay this over several years, but it's a new pronouncement by the General Accounting Standard Boards that makes all governments report this liability now on their government-wide financial statements.
Any further questions from the council? Public have any questions or comments? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, do you have a report?
Our hearts and prayers also go out to CB Forgotten, who in the community has been in the political scene for many years, and his wife works for the community very hard as far as keeping Tangahbahoa Parish clean, and she's been a big part of keeping our area well in front of so many other communities as far as working with students from Southeastern and in the community, the city of Hammond, so my heart goes out to her, and please have your prayers go out to CB as well as everyone else that was mentioned tonight. On a tax notice, November was not a great month for us, but we expected that when I came in the office. I was concerned about the roundabouts, and we are actually in a negative for the first time in a while, so hopefully December will step up and bring us in some good sales tax, as it usually does because it's Christmas, but normally November is a good month for us. So that being said, we're fortunate that a lot of the projects that Chuck has in place for us that have already been approved and bid out are the projects that the council members wanted in their areas, so we looked at a lot of those today, and those projects should be done. But that being said, we're going to put things on hold until December comes through and see where we'll go forward with other projects in the city, because first and foremost, obviously, we need to keep the streets up and the sewer up and the water up and all the utilities and everything else that the community expects from the safety included. So that being said, we'll see what happens the month of December when those numbers come in. Also, on a better note, much better note, we have 600 pounds of rainbow trout coming into Zumari Park Pond that needs to be fished out because it's a very, a trout that's susceptible to heat, so while it's cool, if you know anyone who loves to fish, please get them in Zumari Park, they'll, go ahead and put those in January 13th. So we'll have rainbow trout of all trout in the Hammond Zumari Park Pond, which is great. Free to us from the wildlife and fisheries.
600 pounds?
600 pounds.
How many fishes are?
And we need them fished out.
I'm just trying, I'm just figuring how many I need to catch for this.
At least 600.
Can you face on the meeting?
Also, we're going to start the Hammond Police Department Community Outreach Meetings. They'll start on the 7th at the Tangahbahoa Parish African American Heritage Center, 600 Phoenix Square at 5:30. On January 12th, 5:30 at the Hammond City Council here, 310 Charles Street, and on the 13th, for all those that you might know that don't want to be out after dark, usually older people, some like my mother don't like to drive after dark since 86, we have that meeting at 2:30 at the Tangahbahoa Parish Government Building. So that's 15485 West Club Delux Road, that's right next to the Tangahbahoa Parish Sheriff's Office and the Health Center. That's my report.
While your hours are fishing at Zumari Park?
That's the dawn.
That's when the park is open.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President, I do have one question. Met Mr. Mayor and Lacy for clarification. When you talked about holding some of the projects until we get through December, some of that money is budgeted from our capital outlay in the charitable gaming tax. Now, you're not referring to that, we're not going to hold those projects that we had, that come specifically from that fund?
Your project, don't make no use.
Well, not necessarily mine, just any that, any that was funded from that fund, I don't...
Most of those projects...
I don't think it's fair to hold for that because that is strictly capital project money.
And all those projects that we all talked about that y'all were interested in or being taken care of, the rail, the drainage, the West, the bridge that you're concerned about by the school, and Mike, the drains, Longleaf, and some others. Chuck, if you want to step in at any point, I think that pretty much covers it. Bill West has some major issues, but what we need to truly do is make sure that some of the major issues that were found through the eye and eye and things that we're having... One of the problems we have with the city of Hammond is all of these internet companies that come through here, NTS and these others, when they hit water, it's fine, water comes out, we fix it, but we don't know what they do to the sewer, and we find that out through heavy rains, and that's a constant battle for us, and we get in, we put this camera through, we have some problems in Woodbury that we're having to take care of, so hopefully, yes, that won't be an issue.
Okay.
I think, just to, not to go long on that, but I think what Councilman is talking about is that those funds are almost like dedicated, in other words.
The majority of the capital outlay projects actually are funded still through sales tax. The video bingo money goes to a certain portion of those, and then the water and sewer fund goes to a certain portion of the water and sewer projects, but then there's still a large portion of sales tax that is used to fund capital outlay projects too, so...
Sure, sure.
And we're just going to watch it for a month.
I totally understand that. I just, I think there's, I forget the number, it's 900,000 maybe that was from the bingo revenue tax? So anyway, I mean, I'm beating a dead horse, but it can't be necessarily held for other projects because it's dedicated to that, and I know, I know you realize that, I just wanted to clarify that for all the council because I know all of us have projects in wait.
That's the one that, with the bridge, we got school kids walking in the street, and so that one is very important.
I think. Didn't you say the bridge is already slated to be bid?
All of the ones I just mentioned will be taken care of.
All right. Do we have any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? Minutes, if everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of December 15th, 2015, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call, please.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolutions, new business. Number one, a resolution for the approval to purchase munis, property tax, and intergov occupational license software from Tyler Technologies in an amount of $83,385 for implementation services and training. Sammy?
This is for a project we budgeted for at the beginning of the year, the fiscal year. This is to replace all of the property tax and occupational license software that is very, 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 very antiquated, and I've been here almost 12 years, and we've talked about it every year since, so this is going to, huge upgrade. So we'll be able to have payments come in online.
That's good.
Yeah, that's one of the big benefits for the public.
And Sammy, didn't we budget 90,000 for this?
We did. We budgeted 90,000, so we're a little under. And it plugs into our existing munis system that we're already using, and for the property tax side, and then the occupational license tax will be in the intergov software, which is the same thing the permitting and planning office uses.
You're excited about this, aren't you?
Very excited, very excited. Sleep, sleep good at night once it's done.
Do we have any council questions or comments? Any from the public?
Yes, my name is Sal Niccolosi, and 101 East Tammy Drive, Hammond, Louisiana. I'd just like to know as information mainly, is this company in this parish, or is it this company out of the parish? Or is it submitted to more than one company, or...
It's, it's an existing company, so it's kind of a sole source. We're expanding software we already purchased, so, and the company actually exists there based out of, I want to say Maine or Massachusetts. I mean, they're, they're kind of the pinnacle of government software companies. They're kind of like, if you were to look at Microsoft and the general software world, they're like the Microsoft of the government software world.
Okay.
They're a very good company.
Thank you, Sal. All right, I entertain a motion. Those two approved. Motion to approve. Second, roll call, please.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to approve the appointment of Desiree Doty as a Recreation Director with an annual salary of $44,157, pay grade 129, Step 4, effective January 6th, 2016. Mayor?
I'm excited today to, to bring Desiree before you. Desiree was with us for two years, 2013 to 2015. Before that, she was the coach assistant in Ponchatoula. Since she had left and went to LaRonde to coach and teach, and after numerous calls to her and conversation, it was heavy on her heart because she was starting a career in education, which she, you know, went to school for, but she did such a great job here when she was working as an assistant to Monroe, that I think she's the perfect fit. She's local, she knows the community, and I think she's gonna be really good for the Recreation Department. So my recommendation to the council is to please accept Desiree Doty as our new Recreation Director.
And Desiree is here, if anyone has any questions, you wanna stand up?
Sure. I just wanna say thank you for this opportunity, and I'd like to continue the progress of the Recreation Department and also bring new programs, and I'm just excited to be part of St. Hammond again. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second, roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution, one, approving submission of an application for $400,000.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes.
Is that January 6th, right?
Yes.
So that means that's today?
If you have a question, I'll ready to work.
I'll call you, I'll call you.
You're ready to get to work, that's all right. So number three, a resolution approving the submission of an application for $400,000 under the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program to purchase an aircraft rescue firefighting vehicle for the Hammond North Shore Regional Airport. Number two, agreeing to a cash match of up to $200,000. Number three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents. Charles Broch.
This is the first of two AFG applications that we're submitting for your consideration and approval tonight. Fairly self-explanatory, we're applying for a grant for a new, larger, more capable aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle for the airport in light of the accident, unfortunate accident we had earlier this year, or actually last year. This is the time to do it. So I've talked with the chief, I've talked with the mayor, our director of administration, the director of our airport, everyone is agreement that now is the time to make this application.
We did have an incident New Year's Day. Jacob Reston and I talked about it earlier. We had a pilot from Slide Al that took off for his family, and he moved the selector switch for his landing gear up. He felt his plane wasn't operating like it normally did, so he thought his gear was down. Rather than go back to Slide Al and land the plane, because we have a tower, because we have apparatus to help out if something went wrong for his family and the fire department, he came to Hammond, flew over the tower, tower told him that his gear was down, landed, uncertain if it was gonna collapse because of the equipment that we have here, so we'll probably start seeing more of that from people who come here because we're, we're that place to go now.
And the $200,000 is?
This would come from fire mileage.
Okay.
That would be an up-to amount. We're budgeting about $600,000 total for the vehicle, it's possible that it could come in under that, but $600,000 is a pretty good figure.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
From the public?
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, resolution, one, approving the submission of an application for $41,625 under the Assistant for Firefighters Grant Program to purchase firefighting equipment for the Hammond Fire Department, two, agreeing to a cash match of $4,625, and three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents.
This one would be purchasing what's called a gear washer. This is basically an industrial washer and a dryer that would be used to wash the firefighting gear, the turnout coats and the pants, as well as about 15 portable radios. These are the radios that the firefighters wear on their persons. These would be replacing existing older radios as well as adding to the radio inventory. There'd be 700 megahertz compatible with other emergency responders.
And the, just again, those 4,600 boxes through the fire mileage as well?
The mileage, yes.
It is?
Make a motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry.
Any questions you can post? All right, we have a motion, second. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Final adoption orders. Number one, final adoption orders to abandon and revoke the dedication of a portion of the west of, west Idaho right away and resubdivide two unnumbered lots in square 148 and 150 of the Kate addition into lots 148A and 150A located 914 West Idaho Avenue and 809 General Patton, request by Lawrence and Janet Watts and Neily Dormin, accordance with serve by William J. Bowden. Recommended approval with condition by Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second, roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, final adoption orders to approve surplus for the following vehicles to be sold on govdeals.com.
Make a motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Interruption going into public hearing, there is none. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.